Okay, good morning. Welcome to the May 22 Nicola County Board of Commissioners meeting. Will you please rise as we have the pledge of allegiance led by our county attorney Michelle Zender Fisher?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Our fellow Commissioner Jim Stenson is on assignment today, so he will not be joining us. Approval of the agenda. Chair would ask for a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve with the amendment from our blue folder.
Commissioner Kemp, Commissioner Lipke, yes, we do have an item that will be on the blue agenda item from Seth Greenwood. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed, it carries. Introduction of new employees. Good morning. Please come forward. Make your introductions.
So I'd like to introduce the new administrative assistant, administrative and program assistant with the extension office, Luann Slusher. She started on April 27th and she's going to be filling in or taking Lorna's position. She was there previous for a number of years. We also have another extension employee. He was unable to make it today. David Foley, he's the new program, 4-H program coordinator.
Good. Would you like to tell us something about yourself, Luann?
I live here in St. Peter, or just outside of St. Peter, on a small little hobby farm. I guess I've been involved with agriculture my whole life. I grew up on a farm in Redwood County and so I'm excited to be in this position and serve our community in this capacity.
Well, very good. We welcome you. And tell us a little bit about Devon.
David.
David Foley.
Yep, David. He's had a number of different positions within 4-H previously in southern Minnesota, I think La Sure County, Rice County. He also worked in Rice County as well. So he's got good 4-H experience and we're excited to have him aboard. He's really energetic and I'm just going to do good things with the program here.
Very good. Any other comments from commissioners?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Yep, thank you.
Have a good day. Moving along in our agenda, we have the consent agenda. Chair would...
I'll move the consent agenda.
Seek a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kemp and Lipke, any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, it carries. Thank you very much. Public appearances. I see we have at least three people here. Would you please come forward, identify yourself, and give us your address, please? Right here. Morning.
Sit down.
Have a seat.
All right. Okay, my name is Jerry Saboda. I'm the general manager at Farmers Co-op of Hanska and I lived down in Hanska during the week, so...
You have something to share with us?
Yes. Wanted to address the board about the flooding on Highway 12 north of Cortland and more than anything, just tell you how it affects our business. Understand that you guys are pulled and pushed different directions with your budgets and things like that, so... A large amount of our business at Cortland, which is a grain elevator is what we run, it's a feed mill and grain business, comes from the north. You run up Highway 12, we plotted out where our customers are all located and there's a big oval shape that runs right up Highway 12. So that's kind of the artery into the Cortland community and the elevator. It's 10-ton road, the only one that comes in from up in that neighborhood. So the flooding there has really affected our business in that a lot of those farmers up in that area use the smaller trucks and tractors and wagons and things like that and aren't willing or able to go to the larger terminal ethanol plants and things like that, so they use our elevator. And kind of what happens with us is we need that corn in order to run our feed business. So we run about 50,000 tons of feed a year out of that location. If we don't, can't originate enough corn locally, which is starting to happen, then we have to transfer corn in from other locations, which costs us another eight, 10 cents a bushel, which is basically our whole margin on that grain that's used in those diets, And then the other issue comes from our deliveries of feed. If we run feed up north, say if we're heading up towards Fairfax Gibbon area up in there, that's our route out of town. It isn't a huge deal if we have to go around 14, except now they put in all those stop signs. We got to get to the bottom of the hill by the Y there at New Ulm, pull up that big hill with the load where it was a lot more convenient just to run up 12, again because it's a 10-ton road. So kind of the whole effect is, you know, farmers are discouraged from hauling our elevator because they don't want to make the long trek around to the other ways to getting in. If they got to go around to Niclet, it's about another 10 miles to get there, 20-mile round trip for them. But probably more concerning to me will be next year when Highway 14 is being reconstructed from the Y where it connects to 15 over to Highway 37 that goes into New Ulm. We won't be able to use that route out of town either. So if that road north of us is flooded over again for an extended amount of time, we'll have to go probably through New Ulm to get to those customers with our feed trucks or go all the way around to Niclet, which adds another 10 miles or so to that turn, so... Mainly, I wanted to come and just look you guys in the eye and say that flooding of that road, it does affect our business and our farmers of the area, and I won't get into some of the other things that have been in the press because you already know those issues, but for us, it's a... Next year, we're really concerned about what's going to happen, so...
Thank you, Jerry. I know that all of us were copied on your note over the weekend and we appreciate your input. Are there any other comments from anyone else? I'd like to ask Seth Greenwood, our county highway engineer, to come forward and we'll take that item at this time, if that works for you, Seth. Thank you, Mr. Saboda.
Just hang around.
Morning, Seth.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board and staff. One item from myself today is to give the board an update on the County Road 12 closure. Since we met last week during our board workshop, I've been working on getting draft estimates from people that can potentially pump water down out of the wetland. I've gotten a couple quotes from a couple manure pumpers and a couple quotes from a couple rental companies. And the quotes kind of have a range in prices, anywhere from probably about $150,000 to $250,000 to pump approximately two to three feet of water out of that wetland area. And we're talking about potentially moving 48 to 72 million gallons of water to achieve that two-to-three-foot drawdown. Right now, we're looking at potentially outletting that water to County Ditch 38A. Tomorrow, I'll be meeting with Mark Behrens, who is the lead viewer of the Freeborn viewers that we've used in the past to talk over that potential, because we would be looking at paying probably an outlet fee to take this water to County Ditch 38A. Since this basin is not included in the benefited area of any drainage system, the law would require us to pay an outlet fee to dispose of the water in a county ditch. So I'll be meeting with him tomorrow to talk over that and then he will work on a potential, what he thinks a proper outlet fee would be to outlet in County Ditch 38A. To pump that amount of water, depending on flow rates, it could take anywhere from 12 to 25 days to pump, just based on how much you're going to move per day. We got to be a little bit careful on amount of flow per minute because of our higher flows, we could look at potential erosive damage to the county ditch. So that'll be kind, if we actually do the pumping, it's going to be kind of a see-as-you-go type of operation and what the ditch system can actually potentially handle. The cheapest way to go to the ditch system would be kitty-corner to the northeast through farmland, which would require us to pay crop damage to lay that hose. That could potentially run $7,000 to $8,000, probably affects upwards of five property owners. I have had conversations with the DNR, particularly the area hydrologist, and from our conversations, the DNR, it seems they would be amenable to permitting us to drain some amount of water out of this basin. We haven't gone far down the permitting route yet because until I know from the county board which way you guys want to go, if you want to pump, then we'll start that permitting process if the board's going to authorize pumping and moving forward.
All right. Anything else to add to that?
No, I'm happy to answer questions.
Let me, let me start. John, I know you'll probably want to pitch in, maybe all of us will. How often does County Road 12 in this basin area get flooded?
That basin's been steadily rising with water, probably for the last 50 years. From the old records I could find, at Public Works, the county raised County Road 12 somewhere in the early to mid-'90s. There's no exact documentation on exactly how much they raised it, but talking with my older staff, they thought they raised it about two feet. And so since that time, the road hasn't flooded.
I know that our April snowstorm and the heavy snows this winter have probably given risen, given cause to part of the rise. Are there any other sources that dump into the basin?
The basin definitely has a natural drainage area that just overland flow flows into there. People have said that there's tile lines that outlet into there, but I don't have an exact count or a size of acreage that outlets into this basin. But that would definitely contribute also to water in the basin. I've been here for almost 11 years and this basin comes up, it goes down, it comes up and goes down. It's flirted with the shoulder of the road, but never overtop until the spring.
Would most of it be due to the heavy snows?
Yeah, we had a fair amount of rain last year, so we went into the winter with the basin fairly full and then we had a tremendous amount of rain and snow this late winter, early spring with flash melt and everything just pours right into the basin. And so, yeah, it was kind of a perfect storm to overtop the road.
So I guess what we're dealing with here is a perfect storm and an act of God, right? Doggone it. John?
A couple of questions. Well, one comment. We had kind of a cool summer last year and I think if we wanted an average heat, we probably wouldn't be having the problem right now. Evaporation, if you're 10 degrees cooler, has to be a lot less evaporation on a body of water like that. Are there any federal funds or anything available for disaster or excessive rainfall or snow?
There's no federally declared disasters for this particular area that you could tap into FEMA funding or something of that nature.
And I guess a comment is, I asked you yesterday and you said it's about $1.2 million to rebuild a county road?
Depending on exactly what you have to do per mile on a full reconstruction, yes, it runs anywhere from 1.2 to 1.5 million typically.
Looking at that, we have three miles of road we're not utilizing. You know, that was built, put there for a purpose of being used. So it's a lot of money, but compared to $4 million worth of road, it's not.
Commissioner Drantl?
So back in 2013 or '14, that fall when we had the FEMA money for the other problems in Cortland Township, this didn't flood then?
Mm-mm.
And we had more rainfall then?
Yeah.
So that's telling me it's not snow melt, that's something else going into that basin.
Excuse me? We didn't get as much rain up my way as they did southeast of Cortland.
But even the summer before, when we had road flooding, that one didn't flood?
Nope.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask Seth, in addition to the pumping costs and the crop damage and an outlet fee to 38, potentially would we have to pay an outlet fee to the other ditches that 38 drains into? Or we don't know that yet?
I don't know that yet. That'll be a question I'll ask Mark Behrens when I meet with him tomorrow.
But that is a potential additional issue that we would face as well.
And I, I don't know if I know enough about how it would work, but if we're pumping, let's just say we decide to pump this out and by June 15th or 20th, we get it down the two feet that you're talking about, when that's being outletted into 38A, is it?
Mm-hmm.
What damage does that cause to 38A as that's being pumped in there? Is it causing any problems as that's being siphoned?
Yeah, if you pump too fast and the water's moving too fast, yeah, you could be looking at erosion and banks lifting potentially.
Right, that's the word I was looking for.
So we'd have to be careful on just how much water you'd push. And if you got to dial back the flow rate, then it's going to take more days to pump, which may add a little bit extra cost to the pumping.
The access of the 250,000-plus would come from where?
Uh, reserves. County reserves.
Highway department reserves?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments, many other people in the audience? Mr. Wyble, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, Tim Wyble, Cortland Township. One thing that was brought to me by an engineer is he said when XL Energy put them pylons in for the new, they put in new structures in the pond, and I told him about when they were pounding in the pylons, how the windows in our house shook and the actual whole house shook. I said, "Shouldn't that loosen the ground up?" He said, "No." He said, "That actually had the opposite effect." He said, "That's going to seal that ground up more." So there could be a little bit of something there too, Mr. Drantl, where, you know, maybe that had a little impact or tightened the ground up and it's not seeping quite as well right in that area? You know, I don't know.
Anyone else? Sure, your name and address?
Larry Lipke, Cortland. I'm Cortland Township Supervisor and we've got township roads one mile to the east and one mile to the west. And the one on the west, 551, I wrote, drove it yesterday, it's in great shape, but if it rains for a few days, that changes in a hurry. And the other one to the east, 531, is in bad shape now and they're both getting, you know, a lot of extra traffic. And I'm also on the Cortland Fire Board and we're concerned about that, but that can really slow us down. About three weeks ago, they saved a guy's life north of Swan Lake and they would have had to go around, I don't know, if they would have made it in time or not. But minutes count, something like that.
Well, I think that this board understands and appreciates the dilemma that you folks are facing. We need to find a way with the recommendation of our engineer as to what direction we need to go.
I will say with the fairly dry weather we've had in the last week and a half or so, it has come down some. There's still some water intruding on the driving lanes of 12, but if we continue to have warm, dry weather here with not real high precipitation, I think that it will drop and the road could be reopened. That doesn't mean that if we don't get a big rain, that it'll overtop again and we'd have to close it, but it has dropped some.
Let me ask this question. Was it about the first of May or was it into April?
It was in April.
Late April, when we started noticing that it was... How much damage can be done to the roadway, to the super infrastructure with it being underwater, if any?
It's had a saturated subgrade for many, many years and surprisingly, it's been holding up very well.
April 27th.
April 27th, yeah. So we're three weeks into this.
If we do choose to pump, the pumping system will have to sit on County Road 12 and 12 will have to be shut down during the duration of the pump.
Do you have a recommendation for us today or are you just reporting?
I'm looking for guidance from the board on do you want to spend the money to pump.
Mr. Chair, another...
There's no guarantees in this, but...
Another consideration, Mr. Chair, too, is because of where the water has to go, we may, it may be prudent to have public hearings with the affected ditch or ditches to get input from them before we send millions of gallons of water there. I'm not sure statutorily we have an obligation or not to do that before we dump into a ditch, but it may be, even if we don't, statutorily may be a good idea.
A good neighborly idea.
Mark Behrens, the ditch viewer, highly recommended for rerouting this much water. He would highly recommend public hearing be held with the affected ditches.
It's not passable in the near future? Or can...
If we have some more dry weather, we may be able to open it up.
Okay. All right. What are the wishes of the board with respect to what Mr. Greenwood is asking us today?
I want done. You looking for a motion, Jack?
Well, let's discuss. What are your interests?
We don't have all of the, from my, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go...
Go ahead.
We don't have all the data yet. We don't know, A, that we're going to get a permit, B, that 86A or worth, or I should say 38A is going to support dumping that much volume of water, plus a public hearing, which is going to be a minimum of, what do we, 12 days' notice?
We figured three weeks out.
I think it's three-week notice. Jackie knows that best.
I mean, if the...
I mean, from an operational standpoint, just going back to that, I would support moving ahead with having all of those places in, all of those components in place. Because we've had a discussion in a public hearing with the ditch holders and the other beneficiaries of that, we need to know what those total numbers are. I'm hard-pressed to give a blank checkbook to do this thing, but the reality of it is we have to have a lot of moving pieces in place before we do it. And so I would support putting those motion, or those items in motion and get us to that point, so then we can make a better fiscal decision and also, in all reality, it gives us some time to see what's going to happen. And so as far as cost benefit, I support investing in those items to get those hearings going and that process in place so that we can make a fully informed decision.
While we do that, would you be supporting, or would the board be supporting the idea of us at least getting the pump people ready to go? Can we, can we reserve a pump or do we have to put money down on a pump to get...
I'll continue to, I'm just looking for direction from the board, which way do you want to go? If you want to keep looking into the pumping scenario, I can continue to refine our numbers and work on the permitting.
Well, if I'm interpreting what Commissioner Kemp is saying, I think that that would be part of what we're interested in.
Absolutely. I think, I think that's consistent with some of our desires, but I think we need to move forward and, but we don't have all the things in place to do that and I can't make an informed decision without that data.
Is that a motion?
We need to work toward a long-term solution, too.
Absolutely.
Yes, this is short-term. We know that.
Because we can't do this every year.
Nope. I did meet with Stone Brook Engineering last week. We toured County Road 12 to have them draft a proposal to develop plans and specs for the reconstruction of 12 from approximately where 12 would tie into the new realignment of 12 when the kind of, trunk Highway 14 bypass Cortland becomes reality up just past the intersection of County Road 21.
And that's consistent with what we passed at the last meeting, so...
I don't know that this board needs to make any motion. I think that what we're saying is we want you to continue to move forward and get these wheels in motion so that we can find a solution.
And then, I guess from, from my perspective, then we should also schedule the public hearing. And Madam County Attorney, do we have...
The statute would suggest that if you're going to use a drainage system as an outlet, there needs to be a petition filed. However, the statute appears to be designed for the purpose of ongoing use of a drainage system as an outlet so that it would be a perpetual use. Here is presumably a one-time outlet and so I'm going to need to do some research to hopefully find a, and a workaround, this language in the statute, so that we don't have to go through that formal petition process when it's a, when it's a single act instead of an ongoing act.
Would that formal petition process mean that people like Tim would have to petition us to do this?
It would be the property that's benefited by the, by the outlet, but again, it's not an ongoing, presumably if, as Commissioner Drantl said, we want a long-term solution, this would presumably be a one-time outlet. It's not going to be an ongoing pumping situation. Normally, when you're using a drainage system as an outlet, there's an ongoing use of that property for that outlet purpose.
Okay.
I think we also need to hold off on setting hearings because I'm not quite sure what the extent of the number of ditches that will be involved. Will it be just 38A or will it be the downstream?
There's one further down that...
Yep. And so I'll know more after talking with Mark Behrens tomorrow, the ditch viewer.
Are we of light mind?
Hot and dry.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe windy.
Yeah.
So do you get a feeling of where the board is asking you to go?
We'll continue to work, we'll continue to revise numbers and work towards pumping.
Because it's 2020 before reconstruction can happen.
Full reconstruction, yeah, there's definitely a time to, it takes to develop the project, acquire right-of-way, go through the permitting process, yes.
I mean, with the detour there next year, you can't reconstruct it with a detour coming.
No, that, if we do open the road, yes, the detour will come.
And our alternative, if we're in a situation like we are now when the detour is turned on and we do flood out again, what's the alternative route for the detour? That goes to Niclet then?
They will reroute, continue on 5 to Niclet and then down to 14.
And then back down to 14.
Yep.
But that puts more load on 5, too, that we didn't anticipate.
Yes, but 5 has been reconstructed, it can handle better than 12, actually.
It's happened before.
Any other comments today from folks in the audience? You understand what our, what the county is dealing with here and our direction to our engineers, what you heard?
Just appreciate the effort that you guys put forward, Seth included, so...
All right.
One question, Jack.
Yes, Commissioner.
Does it look, is there anybody else besides the DNR you got to get permission from? Besides the ditch authority?
No. No, the DNR would issue a, what they call a water appropriations permit.
Okay.
And they're not quite sure if they would tie requirements to amount of gallons you pump or amount of feet of drawdown of the basin. We have further discussion on that. One way the DNR typically issues those water appropriations permit, they tie requirements to the ordinary high water level.
Is there one established?
There is not one established for this basin. In our discussions, it was like, well, how do you establish ordinary high water level for this basin? Because there's nothing ordinary about this basin because it continues to fluctuate so much.
And there's no natural outlet.
And there's no natural outlet, so... But that didn't seem to be a barrier to potentially getting a permit from them, so...
You did mention if we rebuild that road and we don't have the other, don't have a drainage, you know, permanent drainage on it, that you would go higher than the natural outlet? Do you have any idea what the natural outlet is?
We would...
Gets high enough?
The DNR and Ducks Unlimited have talked about potentially managing that basin for better duck habitat, which right now, the water's way too deep for good duck habitat, so it would require a drawdown.
No, I mean if they don't allow that.
Yeah, I was just, for those that maybe haven't, haven't heard that part, if, first part of looking into managing that for duck habitat, the DNR would have to do a feasibility study to see if it's even feasible to draw down and maintain that water level. The first part of actually doing that study is a survey of the entire basin, which gives you, one item that'd be important to us is what the natural outlet elevation is. If that basin continued to fill, where would the water eventually start to run out and what elevation is that? It would be nice... It would be nice if the DNR was able to manage that basin and have the water level lower. That would probably result in lower construction costs for reconstructing Twelve. If they're not able to, to manage it, or have that management practice in place, by the time we want to do the reconstruction, we would build probably at least two feet above natural outlet elevation. So we are completely flood-proofing this portion of County Road Twelve, and that we'd never be back again to raise the road.
All right, well, thank you for your report, Mr. Greenwood. We appreciate it. Mr. Sloboda, Livo, and Lipke, we appreciate your concern for the area, and we'll move forward and hope to get this solved.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next on the agenda, Hawk Creek. Mandy Landcamer is here to report. Morning, Land, Mandy.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Just wanted to discuss the participation in the Hawk Creek One Watershed One Plan process again. As of last Tuesday at the board workshop, there was indication of maintaining the current boundary, as suggested by Bowser, and moving forward with participation as a learning opportunity, since we will be going through the middle, lower, One Watershed One Plan process in the next year or two ourselves with it. At that meeting on Wednesday, which Commissioner Lipke, myself, and Amy Linderwith attended, there was discussion, again, as whether or not the county should participate since of our very small acreage in the overall watershed or suggested boundary. And it was discussed that we would bring it back to the board for a final decision, whether or not we want to pursue our participation. What that means at this point is if we were to pursue participation, the county would be responsible for about thirteen hundred dollars, and that would be for the preparation of the RFP. Currently, the coordinator for the Hawk Creek watershed is preparing that, and that would be based on the four counties participating. That would be our fourth of the overall expenses. It's about fifty-two hundred dollars with it, so we're looking at about thirteen hundred dollars. If the grant is awarded, there'd be some additional expenses up until the actual grant dollars come into the Hawk Creek One Watershed One Plan with it. So there are some considerations with it. There are funds available within our water plan accounts that we can cover those expenses, but I think the discussion today is whether or not the board wants to fully invest within the One Watershed One Plan of the Hawk Creek.
All right, and your recommendation is that we do so?
Originally, I felt that it was a great opportunity for us to learn the process. It is a very unique process, and it is something that's been slowly phased in with Bowser over the last four years. It's an opportunity to partner with our fellow counties. We are on the very end of the watershed, so we do receive some of the runoff from Renville County and Sibley County into the two creeks on the western edge. As we've continued in this process and had these discussions, we always have to weigh the benefits of our participation. And is it something that is feasible and reasonable for the county to participate? With that in mind, I could go either way at this point, to support opting in or opting out. I do believe it's a great opportunity for us to learn. We wouldn't have to lead the process. We can just really sit back and lean, or learn, and have a better understanding. So when it does come to our turn, as the leader of the, the water, the suggested boundary, we have a, a better understanding of it.
All right, what are the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I was there and met with some other commissioners, and apparently two or three of them are okay going with a percentage basis, which we only have two percent of the watershed. But there is one commissioner that said, if you want to vote, you better pay a fair share, your full share. And nobody objected to that, and I guess I can understand that. We did get invited that we could opt out and still attend the meetings. This fifty-two hundred dollars might just be the start. There could be a lot of other bills coming, to show us examples. I guess at this point, I don't know how, and so, okay, each county would get to send a commissioner or a representative, and each county would get to send one person from their Soil and Water Board, and then they were talking about the Hawk Creek Partnership might be another vote. So at best, we'd have two votes out of nine.
Correct.
Understanding if Soil and Water did participate, and like I say, nobody showed up there from Soil and Water. I guess, I, if I, if I keep attending these, I think I could learn just as much without voting.
So, I'm not hearing you endorsing it at this time?
No, I think as long as they keep inviting us to participate without voting, that's fine with me.
I mean, endorsing participation with me?
Right, right.
This would be participation without?
Yes.
Is that your understanding of that meeting also, then, Mandy?
Mm-hmm.
Do you feel you would learn the same, you would have the same experience without a financial contribution?
I don't know exactly. It's somewhat of a moving target. There were pilot projects that were completed a couple of years ago, and the process does take about, around two years. Could be a little bit less, could be a little bit more, depending on the size and the consultant and all those other factors that come into play with it. Bowser does have kind of a process to follow, but it's not a, you have to do it this way with it. So I, I think there's always room for improvement with the process, but it, it's a, it's something new, and the state is still working on that process.
Mr. Chair, on that map, there was also some conversation about possibly changing the line and giving us that little corner. Do you remember, were you there when they were talking about that?
There, one of the comments, and I believe that's in your packet, is the map that shows the yellow outline of the suggested boundary, and then there is a darker line that kind of runs east and west. And that was some discussion of basically cutting off that portion, and so then that area, the western area of the county, would be considered orphaned with it. With our discussions with our own middle, middle and lower watershed discussions with Bowser, they would not support something like that. They told us, because it would create an orphan area. We did bring that up last week, and Bowser appeared to be kind of in that same thought process. It is different Bowser representatives in the Hawk Creek than what we are dealing with on this side. But it did not appear that that was something they would support.
No, because, I mean, we're just getting all their water, and then it's, it's our baby.
But it's overflowing with us.
Yes.
That's where we're having the issue, right?
So I would think if that, we would object to that if that would come forward. I did have a nice conversation with some of the Renville County Soil and Water people and after the meeting, and they said, I don't know why you guys would want to participate. You get the, or why you want to vote, because you get the best of both worlds, being there without the expense and responsibility.
Does this board want to take action on this item?
I did tell her we would get back to her one way or the other today.
I do want to note, the Hawk Creek Coordinator is in the audience. Holly is available if you have any questions.
Oh, she's, okay.
Would you like her to step forward and...
I would.
I missed your name. I suppose the name, Mandy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board. My name is Heidi Roundhorst, and I'm the coordinator of the Hawk Creek Watershed Project.
Okay. So what would you say would be the best option for Niclet County as we sit here today?
I think, you know, if I was in your position as the county, I would choose to opt out. I think looking at the expense that the county would have to contribute, not only for what Mandy had talked about, about the fifty-two hundred, that would compensate for my time to prepare the RFP. So you'd have to have those funds. Also, we talked a lot about at the meeting on Wednesday about the time commitment, of what, what we expect of not only county and SWCD staff, but also commissioner time and SWCD supervisor time. I believe in some of the pilot programs, I estimated, I think, one pilot was about forty meetings. And all of the time that commissioners and staff and supervisors, Bowser expects that to be in-kind, that's not going to be compensated by Bowser. So that would be a county expense, if you have to pay for staff time, for per diem, for mileage, all those expenses. So I think that's an important thing to, to think about. For, you know, I think it's about five percent of the county that would be the Hawk Creek watershed. So, just weighing that, I don't know if it would be beneficial to invest that mu, much funds into such a small portion of the county. You know, we did discuss at the meeting last Wednesday that I would absolutely welcome Niclet County, send all of the emails that I send to the group for the watershed. I would definitely continue to include county commissioners, county staff, and the SWCD. And they would be more than welcome to attend all of the meetings, give input, give feedback, be part of the plan process. The only thing would be, you wouldn't have the vote at the end. But we would definitely identify priority areas. I know Fort Ridgely Creek is a big issue, especially with it coming through Renville County, and there's a lot of issues that end up in Niclet County from those upstream reaches. So we know that there are priority areas, and we definitely would identify those in the plan.
We appreciate your appearing here today, and I think that helps to crystallize this board's direction. John, would you like to make motion?
I move we opt out, but we participate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to opt out of the Hawk Creek Partnership. Any discussion? We've discussed it. Any other discussion? Oh, Mandy?
I do have a follow comment with that.
Oh, please do.
Just to clarify, we had heard the, I want to say horror stories of the pilot projects, and specifically one that's northeast, or northwest of the county. And when I followed up with the Bowser One Watershed One Plan Coordinator, she indicated that some of those horror stories were not, were not something to be concerned about, because it was a much larger area with it, and that it's not as many with it. They had some maybe dysfunction in how the organization was created. And so there are some concerns with it. But just to be clear, because I think that's, some of those concerns are continuing to carry through, and we clarified with those Bowser as soon as we heard that. And yes, there still will be several meetings with it, but not to be concerned that it's an overall massive undertaking with it. It is a very new process with it. But even for our own planning process with the middle and the lower Minnesota, it's not going to be that extent with it.
All right, thank you. Any other comments to the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you very much for making the motion.
Okay, well, the chair will recess the board meeting and call the Drainage Authority meeting to order. Consent agenda.
Move it.
Commissioner Kemp has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Lipke, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries, thank you. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Chair, we're just going to wait on the other issue, then? The thirty-eight A?
I, I don't know that we would-
We almost have to wait at this time.
Till we know what our options are.
Okay, thank, that's good. Go ahead.
Kemp and Lipke have moved, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, it carries. Moving along on the agenda for today, administration, Mr. Crush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One item today. This was a rebid of the tuck planning portion of the sheriff's remodel. We received two bids again from the same two contractors. The low bid is in your packet, at an amount of two-hundred-three-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. That's for one-hundred percent tuck point of the sheriff's office building. The low bid is Restoration Services out of Fairbolts. They submitted the same bid amount as they did the first time. The other party actually increased their bid. So there's, I believe, about an eighty-thousand-dollar spread in the bids, which is common for tuck pointing, because tuck pointing is a very difficult job to estimate cost and time on, so you typically do see wide variations. So my recommendation would be to approve the low bid from Restoration Services and to enter into a contract with them as well.
And is that consistent with our estimated? I didn't look back on that.
Yeah, we, we had in the budget two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, so we're about, well, seventeen thousand under budget.
You've heard the recommendation of the administrator, or is there a motion to that effect?
Move it.
Second.
Kemp and Lipke have moved. Any discussion? Any discussion, questions?
Is there a timeline? Are they ready to pull the trigger as soon as we're ready to go?
Yeah, actually, the job site trailer for the construction managers is probably being placed right now, this morning, and then we anticipate as early as next week as contractors starting to, starting to show up and do work. So it's pretty much ready to roll.
Perfect.
Okay, any other, any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Ken?
Yes.
Lipke?
Yes.
Drantl?
Yes.
Puller?
Yes, it carries. Any other items, Mr. Administrator?
No, other than our other remodeling project, the office build-out for Department of Human Services lease space in the basement of the HHS building. That's coming along really well. They had it all sheet-rock framed and primed as of yesterday. They're painting today. And we are on schedule to have them start slowly moving in by the middle of June and fully paying rent then as of July one. So that's coming along good. If you get a chance, I can take you over there. It's all secure access, but it looks very different in there now with walls up.
All right, very good. Before we move on to informational items, and the county attorney, I want to welcome future Pulitzer Prize winner, Tim Cohen, from the Mankato Freepass, who's covering our meeting today, and nice to see you again.
You too.
Madam Attorney?
I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that Judge Latinsky, our longtime district court judge, passed away, and his funeral is on Wednesday. So I wanted to make sure the board was aware. Served our county well and was instrumental in starting the Guardian Edeltem program. And then we had an honor of having one of the Supreme Court justices, Hudson, visit the county yesterday and attended drug court and attended some court with Judge Crable yesterday, so.
I don't know, I haven't had a chance to talk to the administration. Is your office going to be sending any kind of memorial to the Latinsky funeral? Or should the county be sending some-
At least a letter of condolence.
I, I would think something on behalf of the county. I'm, I'm going to attend and, and-
Will you?
And, um-
We could send a card.
And, and send my own card, but yes, and my office will probably also send one.
Yeah, I noticed on the paper the other day, a member of him. Anything else?
No, that's all.
All right. Any other informational items from staff who are here? I'll do the chair's report. Thank you. Connecting Niclet County was held on May tenth. And I was out at Schmidt Meat Market this past weekend, and Mr. Schmidt came up and said, what a, what a great event it was. Commissioner Lipke, Drantl, and Kemp and I were all there, and it was tremendous. And I think our investment in connecting Niclet County is going to, to good work, so. Appreciate all that. We had our county workshop on May fifteenth, attended a TDS meeting in New Ulm. You asked why in New Ulm. What the board is doing now is visiting member libraries throughout the region, instead of bringing everybody to Mankato, which is a good way for us to see other facilities. I did attend the probation work group in St. Paul last Friday with a couple of the judges and folks in court administration and probation, and will continue to work on that. And the Minnesota Valley Action Council meeting last night. Don't forget, the AMC District Seven meeting will be in Winthrop on June sixth. And that's all I have. Commissioner Drantl?
I'm making notes. I attended the Highway Fourteen focus group, had a meeting post the quarters of Congress decisions. That was last Monday in Cortland at MVL. We're getting to know our way around MVL quite well, aren't we, Seth? I also attended on Wednesday a Reach-In Nine Budget and Finance Committee meeting. Friday, I attended Karen Swenson's retirement party, and she was indeed giddy to be retiring. She was very excited, and it was a nice event. Last night was planning and zoning here in the boardroom, where we had the first public hearing on the Shoreland Management Ordinance. I'm sure when it comes to the full board for the public hearing on June twelfth, there will be a cast of Karen- there will be a cast of characters here for that. Also, we also had discussions about a text amendment to the Conservancy District for the retail antiques and oddities issues that are coming up. That will also come to us eventually.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kemp?
Again, first thing I'd like to indicate my appreciation to all of you to help serve for the employee appreciation luncheon, which was well attended and a lot of fun. It was nice to be able to have a different relationship with our employees. It was, I, I enjoyed it and support us continuing that. Department head meeting, our work session. I also participated in the, the SHIP quarterly meeting. Last night I was at our workforce. There's a couple of really important grants to help individuals get into the workforce that our region was granted, which will be very helpful in getting those individuals, especially, it appears some of our focus is those with English as a second language, getting them into the workforce. And, and there's been a really strong consortium built with South Central College to provide a certificate, a stackable certificate program so we can get people trained into the workforce, but still give them something to build on to ultimately end up with a degree. A lot of anecdotal information where a huge number of our participants to this point are the first ones that have ever been in the college and they're certainly the first ones in their family to participate. So I think good work is being done there and I laud the organization for that participation. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, Commissioner Lipke?
Well, I attended the Niclet County, connecting Niclet County graduation with the rest of you. I went to the department head meeting and workshop with the rest of you and I had the nice journey to Hawk Creek, which is ninety-some miles from here. And I did stop and look at the bottom road, twenty-one, where there's timbering is being done. Constituent visit with a bunch of people concerned with the County twenty-one detour. High water calls almost every day and visited with a lady from Portland who's concerned about the Highway fourteen going, or not the Highway fourteen, but the, the road that connects with Blue Earth County. Goes past the ball field and the bank that that's going to go right in front of her house. So I hopefully got her to talk to Seth and some gentleman from the DOT, well, whoever it was. So anyway, that's it, I guess.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, Jack, excuse me, Jack. What time is the June sixth thing?
Eight o'clock.
It is? Okay.
It takes off about seven.
Well, I'm supposed to, no, I'm supposed to be, what, if you want to, I'm supposed to be at the Soil and Water at the same time, but I think this takes priority.
Yeah, the spring, spring district meeting is usually pretty good because it gives a legislative.
Recap of the legislative.
What recap?
A recap of veto's.
Yeah.
Well, speaking of which, apparently Senator Senjum did get some money for the Highway fourteen project between Owatonna and Dodge Center. I think that's going to live through from what I understand, so.
What's it attached to?
It's in a bonding bill.
It's in a bonding bill?
In the bonding?
In the one point four million dollar bonding bill, I think it is. So they were able to get that through. He's retiring, so I think they're giving him.
So he gets that, but he doesn't get his regional housing projects for mentally ill then?
Yeah. Madam Attorney, do you have anything else that you'd like to add at this time? Approval of commissioner meetings and conferences, we've already approved. Commissioner Kemp going to the White House. Or do we need a motion on that?
He's not accepting.
I'm doing that at my own expense, my personal expense.
If you would like to request reimbursement, you can request a motion now, but.
I would not be willing to do that.
You want to get re-elected in two years, huh?
The issue of, I just think it's important we have a representation because we need to. But I would not ask the board to cost that.
All right.
It's your vacation.
Any other meetings or conferences?
ISG has a drainage gig at the end of the month.
Oh.
Yeah, we got a postcard on that.
Yeah, it's like the same day of Region Nine's bus tour, so I'm waffling. The last time I went with Commissioner Stetson, it was pretty good, actually.
Or is Nate going or do you know? He technically goes. Yeah.
I don't remember getting that. Do you?
I don't either.
It's on my desk, sorry, the other desk.
Mr. Chair, could I receive a copy of that as well if it's going to be circulated? I don't think I received one either.
I think we got a bunch in the mail. I'm not sure who all got them, though.
You remember the date?
Oh, boy. No, I just, I'm not calling.
End of June.
June.
I can look. I'll get the information sent out.
June twenty-seventh. It's at.
Oh, I won't be around.
The Verizon Center downtown.
Oh, okay.
I have one other question.
Yes, Commissioner.
The public hearing, or not, the, the public input sessions you are going to post so we can all attend. On the comprehensive plan?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll list those as noticed meetings on our agenda here, so.
Thank you.
Pick and choose whichever ones you would like.
I'm going to try and attend as many as I can, but I just want to make sure that.
And please encourage people to fill out the survey.
And actually, at a couple of meetings I had recently, I encouraged several, I had several people even that were non-county residents but border county folks, said, please fill out, let us know what you're thinking.
Mr. Chair, on that subject, we are leaving for Montana after the board meeting, the twenty-sixth, though I won't make it to the loft yet once, so I hope at least one or two of you could be in my absence there.
I'd really hard to be there.
Very good. Any other items? Chair will seek a motion to approve per diems and expenses for.
Second.
Motion and a second from Kemp and Lipke. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Are there any other items to come before the board here today? Any other items? We're adjourned. Thank you.